Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Armstrong, are you on the audio there? Okay, good. We have a form of government giving the due order. Our members of the public make sense as follows. I'm going to paper P S four, four, five, six. B O B T H dot D U four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Z A three, dot, W, I, equals, dot, dot, dot. Bottom number two, and again, it's considered approval of the national regulation of board questions. I think it's important, as we hear, in the other question, that it's like. That's it. Both have made a second, if they're fully met. All those present say aye.
Aye.
All of the votes, both secured. Next time, a film update, and I'll say, the public just to this topic, or the, or the, or the. Did you have anyone, uh, see the, no, or the?
No.
Next time, on the number four, next to Texas.
Uh, just to remind everyone that we are in, uh, phase three, moved into phase three of our reopening plan. Uh, thanks to the great work of our, of our, our leadership here at the college and so. Um, anyway, that, that's good news. Uh, many colleges aren't quite there, they can't get out of phase one. So, we're doing really well. Uh, scholarship update, Dr. Adie? No. Talk, get closer to it, talk.
Thank you.
Barbara, you wanna do your video?
It's like. The first thing I want to show you is, this is a long time coming, but we need to talk about it. Present time about the joint activity this year, we give market, and generates visual publicity for all of us. So, we had other ideas about a year ago, but this year, we decided to focus on, and then make it an important, so I'm gonna show you that. And then, and make it an important song that I wanted to show you all. Need to find a new leader, but that's what we started saying, local community college. Community college has a period of wanting to find a man, you know, but they help you. This is a technology that's pretty. That was a people that funded. And what that means is founders, two great community colleges. That's what that's a college, and let me be community college and technical college. Community college, all five. Important fact that had a fight before. In moment, we're all five, we're going on now. And we split across on the media and we kind of little bit. The production that is. Um, the other thing, and I'm not very attracted to this, it's a very much probably never been seen because that's a lot. But we've been during CTC live on Facebook and it also a different. And almost every academic department supports the problem. It's just a way for us, uh, how students were here and who sign access services. That mentions has been on the quad, she's our academic faculty, um, the record. And you see in this picture Ronnie Turner, um, Jackie there. She was starting to succeed, success, of course, her first opportunity whatsoever. And Russell and Marcus, who she along with my staff are on every single one of these. To make sure that questions that students ask and pass to. It's a very good team, right? And I think that very is. All right, you have great, uh, so. The whole lot of that. So, you see there is a firm, and we see the scholarship that was sent. And, um, this is a prior document. That was making a practice. That were the symptoms of the scholarship. It led to a very low order mass population, best point I have been to. And you see there in the picture of that. And you see, you see this scholarship, which is called. From Catholic High School. The students always existed as. Loud. And then the picture in the light of it is some kind of Spanish. She is a freshman graduate and is. We should build. Also have a, uh, another sitting circuit. Grabbing also school, two sequences of scholarship. Uh, the part of us, uh, several as well, so. And we separate by itself, but we want to practice everything separate practice. Because we think it's. All right, and here's some letters that's. But I'm not too worried. I hope they're sort of, probably not, it's got the left one, but I'm sorry. So, I'm thinking this is part of you, thank you, others, strong students, um, that's from, uh, this, uh. And she, um, she presses it for her gratitude and she says she thinks that she is, uh, she's a scholarship. She pressed to major in nursing, we call it. And then, and it's the kind of, what to say, the second process. And also the black letter, the signs of nursing. So, the loss of anything has a way that we do is that culture and we've heard nerves of how. Really, 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 really. And I'm delighted to see a part. Oh, just thank you so much for the scholarship. It's a lot for me and my family. I'm excited to continue to buy it. To get some, this is all. So, uh, certainly, there, uh, we have the funding assistance. For the next slide is a particular program. As you may know, we have a few, uh, six, seven, eight, seven, also three, four weekends. Final platform, America's fifth training program. And you can see the thirty second test program. I have to have the story. Right, he also puts us as the third best. So, rather than the second best. Um, the inner fit for them is such a powerful pepper. And they offer support. And that's just the same behind the reason that I'm a great line of technicians. So, it seems we, um, we have systems applied and, and jobs available for them. And also, I mean, we have. A lot more happening. Six hundred and eighty faculty. As you can see, they are entirely in classroom. And the students, they don't have any internet, but they can have a virtual guest speaker. And the guest speaker was at all this year. He worked at the county policy department, also said, yes, students, this is the network program. And the reason why we're doing that as a guest speaker is because it's great somewhere, it's like really. Part of the.
What's Dr. Ford?
That's easy. I don't know. It's like. What is for not looking. But we haven't seen that. Once you see them, now it's all, it's always. Hopefully, that's it. So, it's been, uh, funny. That. And all. Well, I. But very kind of. Person. And. Only people. Want maybe to. Um, he was like, I think he was. Part of. Uh, this is. I think it's hard to act against. How. Uh. Really, actually, uh, he. That is. Okay. What is it? And I said. Uh, they had a three one. What is it? It's. They, 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 yeah. Right. Right, you. Get a lot. So. Right, you. And you have to be. Be, uh. Uh. Three, one. One. There. That is all I. Think. It was. Not just that. That's. You know, you have to pay. You have to ask. And, uh. Part of it, they are active. That is, they are, they are. Do you have to? That's. That. I mean, it's, we have, we have, we have. A year, you have to pay. That's the eye. Part of. Uh, you, and it's, and it's. If you start, it's two, two, and then. So. And we. And I should know the office. I think. That's it. Yeah.
Dr. Garrett, do you have anything? Or we, we covered it? She covered, okay. Okay, that's, uh, my report, sir.
Next time, as we discussed, consider approval to be. Twenty twenty here on financial speaking. Welcome back.
I know you got a little later than all, but I'll pick him up from R and R. Uh, I, I think it's important to note. What we talked about since we had that hit about. Uh, we had to take that. As a reminder, the last four months, a bottom line, like, positive, you know, sixteen. May, the positive one may, the positive three months. So, we are continuing to define and define, walk off, stabilize a little bit, however. Uh, July, August, R and R. Forty plus financial power. So, they're all spending. The year's not over. If we are fortunate and if they are to follow the right direction, five and five years. It's gonna be well. Uh, it's weird that you're. Broadcasting in the future, I wonder what one of us, uh, but I tell you what, if somehow we're able to. Any lack or somehow close to black. I consider that very acceptable. What is wrong with. All of you, uh, because I think that I am really excited about, and I'm just talking about that as well. It's hard to add, and definitely. So, if you're going now, they're in different positions. Move them. But if you think of where they are in normal class. We've literally spent the last forty five months in a huge town to turn on seventy five. Pretty negative. And. Along. And that's all. I don't think I really have anything else in the world that I'd like to share from. I can, I can. I'll take a little bit about things, uh, a little more information related to, uh, what you've done. That, uh, we've done, Chandler, who's probably a whole ass job, chair of everyone. Uh, both, uh, budget project. The biggest thing that I want to share with. I, I bet. There is a debate in, uh, tomorrow. Uh, let me give the word exactly about the call. That's the way. So, we. They just prepared that for me tomorrow. They saw the certified mold that I put that. The effect of residence. Uh, are, are, uh, based, uh. Or actually, actually, they. Trying to, uh, actually, uh, with that. One half, two, three half, two half. Uh, all of the people did. And all are. So, with that in mind, actually, probably. All of you. How much, I don't know, with, uh, one, seven, nine, currently. Although they are. The same, uh, I, I keep wanting to be real flat. Always in there. That is why. Uh, we don't sell them at all. If you wanna have fun sometimes, they really expect. Hope that's really. About that. What I'd like to share in, we're building budgets with an answer thing. On that. Now, what that will do for us. And I just. Another. What that means is, all the projects that's gone over last year. It's now that bank deposits here, people generating same dollars. While we still have increase in our overall evidence. All of them. Both. The law that you have, uh, one of them. Why I have to pay that number? Chairman, I, I've got a lot of. Off the line. People building the budget, planning on on that number. That's great. If everything else. Some of those. So, that. The biggest thing that, uh, if we're watching, uh, part of that.
We're working for the brief. So, I'll back them up. Most made, especially if it's a free, uh, uh, support. In the discussion, most. All over the globe.
Aye.
Most serious. Next time, on agenda, is a discussion for approval to award the foot office new. And the contract, allowing to send North America six months. An amount of three hundred and nine thousand dollars for two, except on the fourth one. One, to all the thirty first point twenty one. Both can play for second, if you want to discuss one more. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Most serious. Uh, next time, on agenda, is a discussion for approval to exercise the full of office. Sure, and the contract on the public. Is all going on, now that it's very early. Bringing people in, lost. And the last thing now, if anyone really wants that. All of the people can. For the period of twenty twenty, to all the thirty first point twenty one.
Uh, ten to eleven. Uh. Actually, we have. Uh, it was. Uh, state license, uh, twelve. And, uh, nothing is. Talking about the past. I know we've been. And that's it, uh, five. I did, uh, check the insurance. Also, the grace that. I. And that's, uh, for grassman's final year. Often for, uh. It's, it's next. Spot.
We're working. All of the papers. Most can play. Uh, hold a second. Need to discuss one more. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Most serious. That's it. Our next time, is discussion for approval to award the contract. Not swat the problem, the initial base term of one year, beginning September fourth twenty twenty, with a four, one year option. With the dollar.
Aye.
We're working with the dollar. All of the papers.
No.
Most can play the answer. We're discussing that most. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Most serious. Next time, is discussion for approval to award the second option, the contract for enterprise. Media planning, line, and head of marketing. Consulting services with Richard Thorpe, who is very, except for the fourth twenty twenty, to all the thirty first point twenty one. Hello.
Eric, if you, um, you, um, discuss the. And if you all want, uh, media, fine. The. Application. I will then, right. So, that's. Uh. The, I think it's also. Specifically.
We're working. All of. All of the papers. It's said, what's the main insight? Need to discuss on that most. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Most serious. Next time, is discussion for single awards to put off here for the contract. Positions, leadership management, positions, and forty that. An amount of fifty five thousand dollars for two, one, two, three, all of them. Anyone.
This is a very good. Actually. Deploy out. And, um. Anybody. Uh, first contact. Very complex. So, to. Better.
We're working with the board. Uh, there's any more. Most can play. Please, most can play the insight. All of the papers, most say aye.
Aye.
Most serious. Next time, on agenda, is there any topics we want to get out of announcements for the boardroom? Again. Number eleven.
Uh, number eleven. Salesforce.
Okay, I'm, I'm sitting down one, two more. Uh, discussion for approval to exercise the full of here in sales force. For the part of that. You have sixty seven thousand dollars for two, except for the fourth. Very good. Yeah.
The way that. It's a, which is something, uh, thanks to.
We're working with the board. All of the papers. Most can play the insight. Need to discuss on that most. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Most serious. But now we're going to the regulation page. Office, okay, we did have an announcement. Well. I don't have anything. Announcing time, location, and board works up specifically. Fifty, all the days, day twenty twenty, and one zero. And regular board meeting, setting all the. At this time, we'll. Pull up an executive session. We're gonna move off to the board.
Freddie's gonna get Don set up in the other room. Okay.